Thank you for your time to answer some of your questions from earlier when Ray was up. We did just order, a big order of ammunition and Liam goes to the constables and to Ray's office and makes sure we get everything and the county attorney's investigator, the district attorney investigator, everybody that's in county law enforcement, we get them on the same page, get it all ordered together. So it's all state contract and get the best price we can get. On what I handed out to you earlier before we got started, the red, the cover sheet with the red writing, that's like a summary sheet and then underneath that is the paperwork that came from Stan originally that I updated with the budget request. So I just started at the top of that, on the summary page with, and went in the same order as the other pages went. So the top of the list is animal control. Animal control did put it in for officers to get the regular three percent raise like you've been able to do for the last few years. So hopefully that can continue. Some of the things that we had some problems with are supplies and we raised them from eight thousand to twelve thousand, so four thousand dollars. It's just supplies are costing more and we need more of them. The next thing on the list was the veterinary infidels. We had some issues with that. So after working on it, thinking about it, we decided that we probably need to, so we don't have any issues in the future. This is the money passed through from the adoption sale, or adoptions and then it goes into a pot of money. They pay it upfront and then when the animal cat or the dog gets fated or neutered, then the bill comes back from the vet. So we probably just need to make sure we got that covered all the time. I'd like to have it increased from nine thousand six hundred up to thirty-five thousand. That's the only thing on the animal control. On sheriff administration, one thing that's been talked about for two or three years is getting the clerks, doing away with the CS twos and going to the CS threes. I know that's been done in some cases around the county. So I'd like to see if we could do that for my clerks that are in that same boat. I know we have a number of them up at the sheriff's office that are in that CS, CS two range. I can't remember if it's six or seven. I have that list somewhere here. But I'd like to get that changed if, if it money's available this year to do that. The other thing that's been big that we need to stir up a lot of trouble this year, but I just felt like it was my responsibility to go to the citizens, try to get support for possible tax increase or just more money on the budget. So I haven't tried to hold anything back as far as I try to let the citizens know. I'm one of the biggest burdens of your tax dollar and I'm here to ask for some more. So what I'd like to do is present it to you, the different step plan and what it would cost for the deputies I have now. It's changed up a little bit since we first put it out, but not very much. It's so it came to an addition of four hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars for the deputies and then the addition for, I think there were some problems. I'd sent some paperwork in to the judge and Stan and I had combined it, some extra things in there. So I'm sorry about that. I know they brought that number up considerably and I know what I've been promoting is about the penny, the tax increase. So brought that back down where it's supposed to be. So.
Which one is that Roger? Are you talking about the deputies lineup?
Yeah, chief deputy and the deputy lineup.
Okay. And that's, that's more like a three cents really because you have to add a dollar eighty-five on to every dollar that you give. So it's really like two dollars and eighty-five cents you're going up, which will bring that four hundred and twenty-five thousand up over a million too.
Well, yeah, I'd just like to talk about it, see what we can do. It's, we're trying to, we've lost deputies over the years. I think my first part of putting that information, we were at forty-six or forty-seven and now we're up to like fifty deputies that we've lost. So we train them, we lose them. We've spent about, well, over a million dollars on, over the years, to train them, get them, get them trained. I put out some information of what it costs to train a deputy.
Do you understand that man's question?
What it costs to pay him, to train him.
No.
To get the best and all that. So all adding up and it goes out the window when we lose them. So.
Do you know how many patrol deputies you've lost this year?
Off the top of my head, lost Cliff again, lost two in December, which that was last year. I've lost Cliff this year. I guess I've got.
You've lost one this year. One and one retired. Two. Well, patrol deputies. Oh, okay. Okay, go ahead.
So I wanted to see what we could do, put that out there and it's up for discussion. I put out a step plan that is more comparable to what's going on in the rest of the cities and counties around us that we compete with.
Roger, we have sixteen deputies coming in from other counties. Sixteen that are driving in from as far away as Irving. And if, if they're paying so much more, why are they not working over there? And aren't they coming in from Parker County, Johnson County? Why aren't they working? I mean, why don't they get a job where they can make more where they live? Why aren't they doing that? If that's the rationale behind this?
Some have, they've moved on and others who are stands is dedicated, I guess.
Okay, continue.
I brought up, this is on the other sheet, about the CS level, the two and getting rid of the twos and bringing them up to threes.
You know that's not the penny. You know that. I mean, the stuff you're bringing today, if you haven't seen the CS two clerks and CS three, that's not in the one penny that you're, that you told them, that you went out and told the public. That was only your deputies.
Which is more like three cents.
You understand that, don't you?
I understand.
Okay. Because if you tell somebody it's a penny on the tax roll and then come back and want to move your clerks, I mean, there's nothing on this plan you've given us for anybody in the jail or for your, for your clerks until, until this time right now.
Well, I had it in the, in the budget for everybody to get a, the regular raise in the budget that I submitted to the judge and Stan.
But that's not part of the, that's not part of the deputies raise of only one penny?
That's.
Is that correct statement?
That's a correct statement.
Okay. I mean, it takes X amount of dollars to get raises on step plan across the board, three percent. Every employee got a raise last year. Is that a correct statement?
That's a correct statement.
Every commissioner and every electric official got a raise. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
But yet it wouldn't be told that way when you were out talking about it.
That wasn't brought. I was trying to promote the deputies and get them help with the raise. I didn't, I never tried to say, I didn't never try to lie about anything that was going on. So once you brought some things to my attention, I brought it up about benefit packages. I'm thinking about that.
I love that Roger. Did you ever mention a certain pay that you did pay to the public who's below this?
I.
You guys know that at least you're going to be making, they're making four thousand dollars on certain pay on these.
The ones that are, have the training and the experience and the different levels that may get that.
Probably proceeding on that. I mean, you got five, four thousand left, eight, three thousand left, nine deputies, two thousand left. Extra pay gives them a mix.
Yeah, I had a couple of comments.
Okay, go ahead Butch.
Roger, I'm going to cut you off. You got something else? Could I say some comments?
Go ahead. I got a list of things.
I want to thank you and your staff and really all of the county. Need to make a public thank you, a public record of the thank you for the turnout during this emergency response. And when I say emergency services, I'm referring to Ray and Roger and the state in general. We had an opportunity to meet with the governor who was very sympathetic to our issue. We got a tremendous response, not only from, from the county, but also the state. So it's always been my contention that if we're not safe and secure as a county, everything else somewhat pales in comparison. Having said that, I have a couple of, I think, comments that I want to share with my colleagues as we begin to, to discuss this issue. Bear with me, they're random thoughts Roger and I and various members of the court have discussed this over the last few months. So please bear with me. As we start to discuss this compensation package, I want to express my concerns with the concept of singling out basically a group within a group, a subgroup within an organization. We run the risk of creating resentment and perhaps negative morale. It still has to be, it still has to be discussed, but in the back of my mind, I want to make sure that we do understand that that, that is part and parcel of group dynamics. We run the risk of sending the wrong message. We, if we do a one size fits all for that subgroup, we could be telling excellent performers that they're just locked in with all the rest. Everything in that subgroup theoretically is being rewarded. The real message though is telling anyone in that subgroup that's mediocre or poor performer, you too are locked in with that solution. And I'm just concerned about that. The problem we are addressing today, as it has been clearly defined to me on numerous occasions with the sheriff, started out as entry level junior deputy retention issue. It was perceived that we were not receiving a return on investment. We were putting in the training, all those costs to bring, excuse me, to bring someone up to speed and make them productive and then they were going out the door. So my focus has always been on a solution for that, a laser focus for that, that issue, a return on investment. I've tried to define where in that entry level junior officer career path is that return on investment achieved. It's probably mathematical that we could find that point where the dollars or the, the training effort, there is a point in which that line intersects and that to me should be then the minimum target for our solution is to find that point at which we are now going to get our return on investment. So that's a concern mine. I think our analysis has been somewhat shallow. We have not done detailed analysis of the exit interviews. I'm not so sure they even exist. Chances are as someone exits a job, that's the point in time where we can really capture that reason for leaving. It's easy to identify something tangible like pay. It's a dollar figure. It's very transparent. But rarely does someone exit and go someplace else strictly for pay. I, I'd like to get that analysis on, if you're leaving for pay, help us determine what pay level would have kept you. If you're leaving for other rationale that you, for example, the working conditions or perhaps as an entry level person, this isn't for me. Law enforcement isn't what I thought it would be. Promotion opportunities, educational opportunities, better benefits, scheduling. There's just a myriad of issues gnarly that an individual has when they move on. And as Roger and I have talked over, my tenure here as a commissioner, a lot of these folks, not a lot, come back. They see the grass is not as greener as it was. They went on to the, to the bigger city and they found that again, the grass is not always greener. So I want to make sure that our solution addresses that actual, that actual problem. Couple of other quick notes, our previous germaine to this discussion. Bureaucracies have a tendency to throw money at issues. Again, it's very tangible. It's a very transparent fix and unfortunately that doesn't, so often does not address the issue. Certainly pays a factor in retention and I'm not, I'm not disputing that. I'm going to leave it at that. I'm sympathetic to getting, to keeping good people. And I think retention is everyone's responsibility. The commander of the unit in the military, the CEO of a company is normally identified as the retention officer. Everyone is there to create that work environment, to ascertain what's going to keep you. And I think that's all of our jobs within the county. As usual, I'm long amended. I apologize for that.
That's no kidding.
I look forward to hearing what the citizens have to say.
Thank you.
At the public hearing.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
At the public hearing.
At the public hearing. Thank you so much for your time.
By the way, we just found out today that, that the Texas Supreme Court has, has taken away a lot of our revenues on filing cases and so forth like that. So we're going to be several hundred thousand dollars down in revenues in the court system because, you know, so this is going to be a hard budget here.
Commissioner Dever, I'd like to address you. I want you to get a mention on the longevity pay and the stick you pay. I'm going to come up with this proposed pay scale and I did that off of the base salaries of each of these positions. I did not add that information in, nor did I add it from the other departments that people are leaving us. They're getting the same thing when they go to other departments, but most of the time it's more than what we already paid. You know, I would be happy to do a compilation of all that information for you to see, but it's just going to drop their numbers a lot higher than ours. What this was, was just a base salary. It did not include the longevity or the certificate pay of which other officer were given what they leave here. And like I said, most of the time it's more than what we paid.
Right. But, but what I was getting at, public did not know that. Public did not know they were giving longevity pay, certain pay on that. That's what I was saying.
All the feedback we were getting is.
Everybody makes thirty-six thousand.
Everybody and they're on food stamps. We do have several there on food stamps. We have clerks all over the place that have food stamps. They might get a lot less than thirty-six thousand.
Please, as you stepped up and said you're the one that made the step plan, it seems to be where I had to rub myself. I don't really have a problem with deputies getting six thousand dollar raise. I, I was on the board when we bumped to about three years ago to, we bumped you up to thirty-six. But I'm like Commissioner Barton. All I heard was we weren't being able to retain deputies. We can't keep deputies. And I'm having a hard time understanding or trying to figure out, well, when I look at the sheet here and count seven or eight deputies that are in the thirty-seven to thirty-nine range and we're going to give them those six thousand dollar raise, why would we give the top five or six brass makers fifteen to nineteen thousand dollar raise?
Okay. Do you have time to explain that?
That's, you bet.
All right. What I did on this proposed space pay scale was starting deputies at forty-two thousand as you can see. And then each rank above that would increase about three thousand for a corporal and an investigator. And then it would increase four thousand for a sergeant, five thousand for a lieutenant, five thousand for a captain, five thousand for a chief deputy. Okay? That's going to be in comparison to agencies that have these positions. And then what I did was I took the current step they're in. I've been with this county for almost eighteen years. I took the current step I'm in and I rotated it to the current step on the new plan. Okay? So you've got new deputies that have been here one or two years and they would move to step one or two wherever they're at currently into the new pay scale. All right? So like I said, I've been here and others have been here ten, twelve, fifteen years. They would ladder all over to the new step, the current step that they're already in and would just ladder to that on the new pay scale.
But that's not how we did that promotion. When you were just recently promoted. When you made a promotion, you usually start down far down the scale. You don't double ladder to eighteen.
Well, if I would have started further down on scale, I would have got one hand of a paint cut for.
Of course you don't pay anybody to take the paint cut. You allow them to move up to the level to get a raise. But my point is, you're, you're, you brought it up. You own, you're looking at like seventeen thousand dollars?
Absolutely.
So how do I answer that to the general public when we're, when everybody tells me, let's pay the deputies. We're losing front line deputies and I want to give them forty-two thousand because all y'all paying the deputies is thirty-six thousand dollars?
Correct.
But that's not true. I'm looking at numbers. That's not what we pay our deputies.
What do you mean that's all over? That, that is starting paying for deputies is thirty-six thousand?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the salaries across the board for everybody right now in the sheriff's office.
Okay.
And I think what Commissioner Dever's saying is we have certain pay attached, we have longevity attached, we have the benefit package attached. I mean, it's not just a block thirty-six thousand that fifty deputies out there on the street are making.
That's correct. And when, when we give this presentation to the public, we show them everything that everybody made. We show them the same spreadsheets that you have.
We never said that everybody was a thirty-six thousand, but there was scattered around. Longevity pay, that starts at five years? We don't have that many that were over five years.
I think one of the things that's missing here is we pay, you know, we, the total compensation package, the lowest deputy I think is like forty-two thousand that we pay because of the, the retirement, because of the insurance and things like that. So those are benefits that, you know, I, I, we talked about this this morning, you know, so you, you made a statement and you said some of these younger guys don't care about insurance. I'd like to see a program where we could pay, okay, we'll pay for your minimum and we'll give you the rest that's left over from ten thousand dollars. So if you could get a five thousand dollar policy, we'll just lump sum you of five thousand. Not add it to your salary, but give you a bonus every time until your insurance goes up as you owe age or, or get a fat or something. So, you know.
That's true with the kids who are in their twenties and thirties, they don't really worry about the insurance. They just wear it online and they put food on the table. And the same with us when we lost two deputies. One was a sergeant level pay and he went to school and they were like five thousand all the way. It was at the same depth. A minimum went out to West End. He basically got the same. They worked sergeant. Deputy very many years.
I know that down in the Eagle Ford Shell, they were all going out to the oil fields. They were losing deputies down there for the oil fields and we can't compete with that.
No, wait, we lost a few back then.
Can I say you have? Is there anything, what is, just continue on with your presentation. Thank you.
The next thing on the, on the list for the administration budget that I increased was increased cost and hires. This year we've already had to add to that fund. Started out at ten thousand dollars. I asked that we take it up to fifteen thousand. Utility costs, I guess that's more of an issue for Tim and the court. I figured this year it's probably going to have to go up a little bit. So I added ten thousand into that. Sheriff's Office investigation costs, that was six thousand. I just added a thousand dollars extra in there for seven thousand. Pays for different tests, DNA test, different things like that. Especially investigation costs. Ammunition had been set at ten thousand. So I asked that it goes up to thirteen thousand. One other thing that I put on the next, before I move on to the Justice Center is I added, and we've talked a number of times, Judge, about IT, Jackie needs help. I asked for an IT person. I didn't add that in the budget anywhere. I just put it on that summary that we didn't think about. So.
You had, you had one, at one time.
Yeah, in two thousand nine, I did have an IT person. And then when Emily left, then he was absorbed into the county IT. And then once Jackie was hired, then he moved on to other things. So I had one to start with and now the technical stuff has increased and I don't, Jackie needs more help to get things done. The, you know, the office runs 24/7. So it's, it's hard to keep up with all of that. So that's why I added that in on that summary sheet, but I didn't know where to add it in or how to add it in on the, in the budget. It was more of a discussion thing.
I, you know, I understand your reasoning on that. But one of the things I don't like about it is if somebody is supporting just you and they go on vacation, then who supports you? You know, it's just, that's just a comment.
Well, it's got to be a team effort.
Yeah.
And I think it was when Joe.
Yeah.
It was a team effort and he helped do county stuff and everybody rest. Has to work together. On the next budget, on the Justice Center's security, I had talked last year about moving up one of the persons into the corporal range. So I asked that that be put into the budget and in the deputy line. And I asked, I added for the three percent and enough to increase one of the deputies to corporal. Dispatch is the next, next budget. That is one that, back in two thousand eight, when I was a fire marshal, I asked that the dispatch be allowed to go from four consuls up to six. And we got that approved through the court. It didn't cost the same thing, other than furniture. Went to the council government. So that was approved. I had to go to the state of Texas, the CSAC. They approved it. So we've got those two consuls added and we've never added any extra personnel since back then. So.
Let me stop you right there. I, I want to compliment Brandy for the, during this past flooding that we had, you know, she was sitting there and she said, I can't stand this. She went over and had an empty console. So, yeah, she, she did a really good job. We appreciate that.
Yep, she did a great job. I appreciate that very much. The other reason I'm asking for dispatchers in the budget on that summary sheet is the fire departments, they're rated. Now our insurance programs are rated and based partially on the ISO programs. And so part of the ratings when they rate a fire department, it comes out of dispatch, how the dispatch rates. Dispatch always rates low because we don't have enough personnel for the amount of calls for service that we have. We have four shifts, twelve hour shifts, two nights, two days. So I asked for four people in that.
Well, let me ask you that. Roger, well, you're asking for four more people to get your, up in the overtime. Just, that's partially, if I get the extra people, I probably could go down in the overtime. So give or take both directions there. So, yeah, we could take some of that away. April and Denise are doing a great job at keeping that controlled. But sometimes like in last week, we just have to add some extra people to help man the phones because of the amount of phone calls coming in and dispatching calls going out. So if we add people in the overtime, it could go down.
On the next budget, the jail, same thing with what I've asked for in the administration budget is the, getting rid of those CS twos and moving them to CS threes and the jails for three percent regular step ladies.
I disagree with this Roger totally. I think those people are highly underpinned.
They are.
You know, seriously, I, you know, they deal with the worst of the worst in good counties, spit on and everything, you know. So.
They are. I just figured I'd try to ask for a big raise there plus the deputies.
Yeah. I know. I just, that's my personal opinion.
And you're right. They're right right now. The last Sunday night, Monday morning, the lightning struck and the console, the control board's out. So they're doing every 15 minute watch. And so they're working harder than they were back there to keep things going until Tim can get that, that board fixed or replaced. So, you know.
I hate to even go over there when we do the jail inspection, you know. Yeah. Because when they do that, when they test the generator, you know, and the lights go out for five seconds, they're all. and the lights go out for five seconds, they're all hollering and making noise, so, yeah. I just wouldn't want to work in that environment, so I really appreciate those guys, Dave.
It's a tough environment to work in, no doubt, and I would appreciate that coming from you. Then, the last thing under the jail is, we've been not really being, but they talked to us about it with the jail commission coming up over the years, and we've had a civilian cook in there to supervise the inmates that cook the breakfast, lunch, and dinners. And they say we have to have a person that's a certified jailer to supervise inmates. So, I'd ask that that get changed and raise that, change that cook's pay from a non-commissioned officer to the same as a jailer. And they could do a lot of other things, too, plus legally supervise those deputies. Right now, we don't have a cook. He quit, went for a better job, so I don't remember where he went to work for, but it's a fairly low-paying deal, so we're hoping we can get one of the jailers to oversee that right now.
What's his height, Roger? Do you have any idea, say?
I didn't bring that with me right now.
Probably twenty-two, something.
Yeah, I said, well, twenties. So, we'll bring it up to the best pay of the jail, or that range, so we can get somebody in there to cover that. Nine-one-one coordinator, you helped her out, helped us out last year. She does a great job in there, so just, she does a lot for us. She was there last week, late, doing maps, all that, so just continue to turn for a three percent raise.
When you ask, that's a question of what you said. When you, I gave you about one, two, about eight places you've asked for add three percent to pay. You're talking about this balance step, right?
This is it.
That's what you mean when you say that?
Yeah, I'm not asking for extra, I'm just asking to continue the regular step raises that you've done for so many years. Victim coordinator, same thing there, she does a great job. Mary is phenomenal, phenomenal with what she's doing now. The amount of stuff that she's getting done, the amount of people that she's taking care of and helping in so many different ways, so I just want to make sure we can keep her around in that pay there. That comes out of the grant, so I guess that would be maybe extra to add that three percent in there for her.
Is that, you're still EMT?
No, I haven't talked about that. I'm talking to victims' quarter here right now, so.
Oh, okay, okay, I'll hold that, okay, sorry.
LEC medical, then we have had two people staffing that, and because we could not find a EMDs, I talked to Dr. Bishop and asked if he would accept an EMT, and so we had two EMT level in there, I think EMT intermediate and EMT, and we've lost one of those. So, we've got one person working all the time, taking call all the time, so she's working Monday through Friday shift, and on call the rest of the time. So, we're trying, I brought that up in the hospital district meeting the other day, but trying to find somebody, and we have not been able to find somebody, so we're still looking.
Have you looked at?